No.
Except for the one random.
Well.
The one random.
Koi?
Koi fish.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, April 22nd. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion, to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin with public comment. Are there any public comments from the board?
Nope.
Nope.
Any public comments from the public?
Well, actually, I do have one, one public thing, only because, because we only have one more meeting before this, and that is, May 9th, are you smarter than a sixth grader?
Yes.
At the high school auditorium for the, the Club of Lunenburg. This is the 11th, the 11th, not the 11th year, the 13th year, but the 11th time we're doing it, because there were two missed years in COVID. Great fundraiser, great family event, lot of fun. I know members of this board will be there, and I will certainly be there emceeing it for the 11th year, so looking forward to seeing everybody there. I think the door is open at 6:30, and the whole game show starts at 7:00.
All right. Thank you. Any public comments from the public? Not seeing anyone. To the booth, we're getting some feedback on the microphones here. All right. Not seeing anyone on Zoom. Moving on to announcements. I have a couple. Annual Town Meeting is quickly approaching. It'll be on Saturday, May 3rd, at 9:00 a.m. at the Middle High School Auditorium. Any registered voter in town is allowed to attend and vote on warrant articles, and there's quite a few important articles that'll be considered and voted on this year. There's two excluded debt articles for Marshall Park and municipal buildings, and a citizen's petition for an override. So I hope you set aside some time out of your day, or maybe a lot of time out of your day, to attend. We'll be making some important decisions as a community at Town Meeting this year, and your opinion matters.
Before you read your next one, I just saw on our way in, I believe that last day to register to vote for Town Meeting is tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I saw that on my way in.
Oh, nice.
So if anyone's not registered and does want to attend.
You have tomorrow to do so. Parks Commission is holding a community meeting on Marshall Park this Saturday, April 26th, at 10:00 a.m. at the TC Passios Gymnasium. So if you want to learn more about the Marshall Park project ahead of Town Meeting, you can attend that community meeting. Spring 2025 Yardway stays. The landfill at 27 Young's Road is open. It's open every Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., except Memorial Day weekend, and will be open until the end of May. And the All Vendor Fair is on May 10th from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. outside TC Passios. Mark that down in your calendars. It's going to be a great event. Any other announcements? All right. Communications from other boards. Don't see anyone here. No meetings tonight, no appointments, ratifications, so we're going to jump right down to Town Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first item to report on for the community is that the swearing-in and penning ceremony for Chief Thibodeau was held last Friday evening. From all accounts, this was a great ceremony, and many turned out in support of the chief. Chair Nizolo did a wonderful job emceeing the event, and I thank him for stepping in to lead the ceremonies.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say real quick, it's truly impressive how quickly that event was planned. I think we settled on the date like last week, right? So Jan, the Town Manager, and Julie, our Assistant Town Manager, planned that entire event in about a week, and it was just absolutely incredible. So truly, thank you so much for making that happen.
Yeah, I'm glad that it was a really special night for the chief.
If I can piggyback on that, I know many of the board members weren't there, but that was not for lack of wanting to be there. Those of us that weren't there did have prior commitments, and as Chair just stated, you know, that was sort of a, a last-minute thing to allow the chief's family to attend, so please don't interpret that as lack of support from the board.
Yeah, I felt badly that I wasn't here. Probably the first time where we've appointed a chief that I wasn't here, and, and I wish I would have been, but.
Same.
And while I've worked with many chiefs, this was my first appointment ever as a chief of a chief, and I also was not able to attend. But this is a nice segue, because for those in the community who also were not able to attend, PAC was there, and they filmed it, and they're right now editing a nice, a nice video that'll be put out shortly. The next item is that the House will be, the State House of Representatives will be beginning debate on the FY '26 budget next Monday, April 28th. The House Ways and Means budget released last week recommended funding Chapter 70 at a rate of 6.7% higher than was funded in the last fiscal year, and level-funded unrestricted general government aid. With the latest release of the budget, Lunenburg is budgeted to receive a net increase over what we were planning of $124,310. There were increases to Chapter 70, but those were coupled with decreases to charter tuition reimbursements and unrestricted government aid. So at this point, not making any changes. If there's any changes to come, we can handle those in, in the special Town Meeting, but for folks who want to do some last-minute advocacy to the state representatives, debate starts next Monday. The Lunenburg Council on Aging will be celebrating Lunenburg's own Charles Sanderson on Monday, May 5th, at 1:00 p.m. at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center with a presentation of the Boston Post Kane and welcoming Charles into the Century Club. Charles is a World War II veteran and a remarkable 101-year-old. Some updates, in addition to the updates from the Chair on Town Meeting, booklets for Town Meeting have been mailed to households, and we have several hundred extras that we will disperse around town as well as bring to Town Meeting. The booklet has also been posted online for folks that would like to view the material on the computer, and I will be having large print versions of the budget available as a handout at Town Meeting for folks that that print is just a little too small. But also, if folks do have access to a computer and they, they want to look online, they can zoom in. If anybody would like a, if you're watching this filming of this meeting and you would like a large print version of the budget in advance of Town Meeting, just reach out to my office, and I'm happy to provide you that. The pre-Town Meeting was held last week with the Moderator and Town Council, and the logistics for Town Meeting are coming together nicely. For, this is really an announcement for the community. The School Department will once again be selling a limited number of pre-bagged lunches for Town Meeting. I am going to send out an email to all Town officials to reserve a lunch with responses due by May 1st, so board members, please look out for that. If you're a Town official, please look out for that. But residents will be able to purchase a lunch first come, first served, for $8 from 11 to 1. And there are several options, including vegetarian options. Since the departure of the Executive Assistant to the Town Manager and Select Board, the duty of completing the annual Town Report has been shifted to the IT Administrative Assistant, but unfortunately, not all of the submissions had been completely pulled together, and the book has not been sent off to the printer as of yet. Although it is a short week this week, we are hopeful that we can at least complete compiling the book this week, which would mean the annual Town Report would be available online in advance of Town Meeting, but hard copies would not likely be back in time for the, from the printer. Again, though, if anybody is, I know a lot of folks read different sections of the annual Town Report in advance of Town Meeting. If folks would like pieces of, of the Town Report in advance to educate themselves on what has happened in the prior fiscal year, please reach out. Happy to get you that information. Project updates. As reported last week, the Mast Dot Underwater Bridge Inspection Team has inspected the bridge on Flat Hill Road. They did note additional section loss and recommended that, given the documented deterioration, including the newly observed section loss, we are recommending the structure remain closed. Through our Town Council, we are reaching out to the contractors to see if there can be any interim solution that would allow the bridge to be opened for vehicles up to a certain weight until repairs can be completed. We have updated the Town website and social media, and truly appreciate the continued patience and understanding of the public. This is not an ideal situation for anybody, and we understand the frustration. Work on the roof and gutter at Ritter Building has been somewhat slow to start. The contract had already been extended through April 30th. Although an additional contract extension is likely needed, we are emphasizing to the contractor that work needs to begin on Ritter currently before we extend it again. So before April 30th, we need to see they're, they're there. It did originally get delayed through all the weather on this project.
It was weather-related.
Weather-related here, but now we were expecting that that job would have started by now. It's not. The kitchen at the Adult Activity Center is nearly complete. The sink does need to be rewelded, and we have a plumber coming to re-weld that sink. That was the most efficient way to do it, rather than order a new sink, all told. And the access control project for town buildings is about one month from commencement, as the vendor is waiting for parts to arrive. Current vacancies, the Executive Assistant to the Town Manager and Select Board, six candidates were interviewed last week, and all had great skill sets. Three have been asked to come back for a second round interview, which will be a practical skills assessment. We are confident that we will have a great candidate who will be able to start in the role before the end of the May. In the meantime, I'd like to thank and announce that the IT Administrative Assistant, Assistant Town Accountant, Assistant Town Manager, and I have all been divvying up various elements of the role. Part-time Assistant to the Sewer Business Manager, we are still waiting on some reference checks. And then for our Beach staff, the Beach Director and Lifeguard appointments will be likely before you at your next meeting, but we do have folks on board in queue for those. And if, the Conservation Commission position has been reposted for the 10 hours a week for the Recording Secretary Administrative Assistant, and we do have a Recording Clerk Secretary that was initially posted internally only, but now we're going to also be posting that one externally. The vacancies remain the same, but I do want to give one special call-out for boards and committees. If anybody is at all interested in the Sewer Commission, if you have any interest in the Sewer Commission, the Sewer Commission is desperate for members. They might be sending out another all-resident mailer, but at this point, they are concerned about their ability to proceed as a commission. But that, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Jen. Any questions for the Town Manager? All right. Thank you very much. And we're going to jump back to communications from other boards, because I believe we may have one now. Or, I just saw you there, Mr. Blatt, so I didn't know if you wanted to.
I wasn't shocked at some lovely floor meeting, so that's fine.
Yeah, that's okay.
Hi, Dave Blatt, Chair of the Green Committee. A pleasure to come up. Got some new faces, so I'm excited here since the last time was in front of you guys.
Yeah, so there were two things, right? One of them was the one thing that you wanted to bring up, and we did ask you in about the grant for the primary school heat.
Yes.
So we had some confusion when we learned about the requirement for that central operating system. So we just wanted to know, like, process-wise, because I know that you've been, you've worked on it for a long time. Was that also a surprise to you? We were just wondering if you could tell us a little bit about the process and maybe answer any questions that board members have.
So the, the original request for the heat pumps was that the schools required, were requiring the heat pumps for cooling. I had tried to emphasize to them, you know, because of the green and because of the state's initiatives, that if you use them for heat, there were quite a few rebates and quite a few grants available for them, not only from the state, through the green community, but also through Unitil, Mass Save program, and things of that sort. So when we, when we got involved, when they had us get involved and help with the second phase that they had, we looked to, we reached out to Unitil and to the green communities to see if there was a way of getting some subsidies for the units that had already been installed. And that's where we had it moved towards the central unit. So the central unit now will allow them to use the heat pumps longer into the year. So you know how we have like times now, like now, where all of a sudden you'll get days where it's still a little chilly, or something like that. You don't really want to heat the whole building, but you can heat a single room, or things of that sort. So we felt it was going to be much more efficient, especially with the available of lower-cost electricity that we have in the town between the solar panels, the solar fields, and all those wonderful things. So when we approached the green communities for the grant, it included a retrofit of Phase 1 to put in a central system, allowing that each individual, well, individual classrooms could be monitored from a central station, could also be controlled from a central station with one, with the facilities manager having that controls, as well as some grant subsidies and some, I think it ended up being an additional two units, two, two or three units that we were able to get for them through the, through the funding. So in total, between the Unitil rebates and the grant funding, roughly 65, 67% of that project was funded, would be funded through the state, and through, and through grants and incentives, and things of that sort. So we were very excited when we were awarded that grant. Each, this, this round, we had a maximum of $240,000 for us, and out of that, $200,000 was going to the heat pumps. The, the additional were going to other projects like cruisers and refrigeration units and other, other upgrades around town. So that's where we're at. I don't know if there's questions on that, or how'd I do?
Any questions from the board?
Yes.
Sure.
So it came back to us that the money that they were allotted by the Capital Planning Committee, the grant wasn't going to be fulfilled, or they, they were going to wait because they didn't have the money for the central units, and they were going to do that next year, and then they were told, I'm assuming, by the Green Communities Committee, that no, if you did that, if you didn't spend the money this year, we couldn't go for grants next year.
That, that is, so, so in order for the, in order for the town to be eligible to apply for additional grants, all grant funds need to have been suspended, and the grant round has to be closed. So if, if they, they could, they did have the ability to wait, however, if they waited, the town, all, any additional projects that we would have wanted to do or been eligible for, we could not apply for.
Right, but we couldn't do the one that was in front of us, because it wasn't complete. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, it was, I, I'm not sure what you mean by it wasn't complete. It was complete in the fact that we received all the funding that we, that we requested for the, for the project. The rest was the school.
I see what Tom's trying to say here. So the grant was $200,000. We were made aware that with the requirement for that central system, whatever it was, was an additional $174,000.
Okay, so.
So there was that gap.
Let me, let me clear that up. So the, so the entire project was 400, was the quote that the schools received for the entire project was $480,000. That was for the additional units and retrofitting the central system, and, and retrofitting the older units, putting in the central controls in, okay? The 310,000, the 200 from green communities, and the 110 from Unitil, was contingent on that central system. The rest of the project was only going to be 170 for the town, for the school, for the rest. And that would have, if, if they did not do the central unit, that project could never have been done for $170,000. Their quotes that they were receiving were over the $300,000 number for just the units. The central unit was minor in the whole grand scheme of things.
But we needed to get that done in order to get the grant, right?
You needed to get it done in order to, in order, it needed to be done in order to be able to apply for any grants or incentives.
Right. So they needed to get it done.
Correct.
This year.
They needed to get, yes, they needed to get it done, period.
Okay.
Okay, whether they did it this year, next year, the reason why we were looking for that to be done this year is because we're trying to gear up the next round of projects.
Right, right. So the question I have on top of that is, when did they know, when did they know that those two were tied together?
They knew from day one that the two were tied together. So we, we made it clear, Unitil, green communities, Mass Save, all made it clear to them that the central units was critical in order to have any incentives, or any ability to have any incentives at all.
And it was clear for them, in their strategy to wait for all of it to be done next year, it was clear to them that you guys wouldn't be able to apply for any other grants then if they did that strategy?
It, we, we made it clear to them. They had, they had included us in a conversation with green communities. With green communities, you do have the ability to wait to close the projects.
No, I'm saying that part.
Right.
But you wouldn't, but the town wouldn't be able to apply for new funding until the current funding was exhausted.
Correct.
Okay. And when did they know that?
They, I believe I've told, I told them earlier, however, when they, when they, when there was any inclining of them waiting, that's when we made them, that's when we reiterated and made them aware again that that was the case.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
All right. I think you cleared up the confusion. Mr. Blatt, thank you. And then the other thing that you wanted to talk about was the charge for the Green Communities Committee.
So, so by the way, just on one thing, can I just do one, on one thing, I just want to give you an update that we did, now we're working closely with Unitil. We have found an amazing gentleman who's helped us with, with, that's our representative for Unitil, that's helped us actually identify projects, as well as get us a energy audit. One of the things that the Community Committee has struggled with is we don't have that expertise. We don't have the ability to go in and see all of the records that the schools have, the towns have, and be able to do things like that, nor do we have the ability to just walk around buildings. So we're right now looking at doing a energy audit for, this would be to have weatherization, as well as HVAC improvement recommendations done by a representative for Mass Save. This, this is a free service that we're offering for both Turkey Hill, because we felt that was the next critical when it came to the schools, as well as for the town, and the, and we're looking to do the Public Safety Building as well. So this way, we'll be more prepared, be able to approach you guys and, and let you know exactly what they have, along with the Capital Committee, to let them know what funds might be available, or what we can have available to maybe expedite some of these projects, before they become necessary when they, more when they should be done.
Right.
Okay.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks.
And then you wanted to talk about the charge.
So the charge of the committee, well, the charge of the committee, it's not as much the charge, well, the charge of the committee, I'd like to talk a little bit more, because one of the things we continue to struggle with is we're, we're having to search for projects that the town might be able to do. And I'm looking to make it, and you guys, to help us with asking the boards, asking the other entities here, to approach us early on, to talk about the projects they might want to do, to see if those projects might have ability to have grant funding. We've struggled for a long time now. That's why we haven't done as many projects as we could have done in this town, because we don't have that insight or expertise. We get, you know, I think you guys have known since last Town Meeting, been rather vocal about this HVAC system at the school, that if it was done correctly the first time, I think we could have had a lot more done. That's why we're trying to make sure Turkey Hill is done in a completely different fashion, as we look for that building, to be able to maintain that building for the next 20 years and beyond. But we look for you guys to help us, asking the boards or requesting that the boards come to us to look at anything that might have some kind of impact on energy usage in this town, and things of that sort. The other thing that we're asking is that, right now, our charge is that we have five members and two associates.
Yes.
Associates. And I'm looking to change that language to be two alternates. You know, with everybody's busy schedules, with folks with kids and trying to make a quorum for a meeting, you guys know how much fun that is, at least yours is every, you know, but you got more months, weeks in the month to make it. But the fact of the matter is sometimes we like to, and we, it also feel it's a better incentive for new members, to bring new members in, where they get to be voting members early on and not just have to sit there and wait for somebody to move on before they can, can do it. So we feel it would be a better charter for us, a charge for us, to be able to have alternates versus associates. I know it's a wording thing.
Well, how, can you speak to what the difference would be?
So my understanding is that an associate is not a voting member, and an alternate can be a voting member.
Right. Basically, he wants the charge updated, so that if there's an issue with the quorum, those two associate members are able to stand in for a regular member and vote.
Correct. Right. Correct.
Is, is the expectation, the alternates go to every meeting, that they can? They just don't vote if they're not needed, or at work?
I don't think they're able to vote at all right now.
Right now?
No, no. I'm talking about an alternate. If you, if you change to an alternate, what would the expectation be as far as the alternates attending?
We would like them to be able to attend every meeting. We ask for all of our members to attend every meeting. However, if they're there, you know, in fact, I've done this as a member of the ZBA. I've let the alternate members be the voting person instead of myself, you know, as a member, sometimes just because it's, you know, they.
The ZBA is not, they have associate members.
They have alternates.
I thought they had associate members.
I thought they were alternates.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. That's why I asked you the difference, because my understanding is the ZBA. But of course, the ZBA is, they have, they have certain parameters under state law, as does the planning board. Like, you can, you can do it. An associate member can vote on the ZBA if they're involved with X amount of, number of the meetings.
Okay.
And, but the Green Communities Act, I don't think has any of that, because it's not state-run, so anybody should be able to vote. So I don't have any problem, as long as it's legal and we should check the Town Council of having alternate members, I'm fine with it. Or not changing the title and just saying, alternate, associate members, when lacking a quorum, can be voting members at that meeting, whatever we need to do.
Perfect.
To make a quorum.
Yes. I mean, we, we also look at it as it's, it's a better incentive.
I get the, I get the intention, so we should.
Because we are looking at it probably having to recruit new members very quickly. In fact, I'd like to, I have a candidate that I'd like to bring for next, for next meeting, if I could.
Great. And I also, like, I have no issue with updating the charge so that they can vote as well. I think it's a very fair request, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I may, first of all, to, to Mr. Blatt's request of letting departments know, he has come to us. This is not the first time. This is not the third time. It's way more than that.
Thank you.
So if we can, through the Town Manager, get something on the calendar in like July or August, and say, or prepare people, saying, if you are planning a project, please check with the Green Communities Act. It, it brings in serious money with projects we should want to do anyway, and, and there shouldn't be any of these where, where the committees, and they've done this several times, chasing something after the fact.
Right.
It just makes things not run efficiently.
Can we make that part of the capital plan process, like, in order to even submit a project on the capital plan, that it's part of the process, that they have to do this as a check first?
Well, right, but.
I mean, not, not that.
No, no, we should, we should. And I bring it up all the means, but by the time it gets to the capital plan, which is like October, it's already late to get them involved. They have to be involved in the planning.
Right, which is why I was thinking, wouldn't the.
It's really the.
Part of that's.
Yeah, I think, I think we can definitely do both of these things. I think I've heard from the Capital Planning Committee that they'd like standardization of some of the forms and the way that the material comes in is presented, and that part of that is a section where they describe alternative funding that has been sought or that will be sought. So absolutely. But I think also, you know, maybe not every department head, but the key department heads who have either facilities or vehicles or something under them, we should, yeah, connect in, in the summer so that they understand, they may not even understand the program itself, right? So.
Correct. Yeah.
And the other thing I want to do is I want to take the opportunity with Mr. Blatt in front of us. First of all, I have the utmost respect for people who stay with committees over a long number of years. He has done that.
Ditto, by the way.
He has, thank you. But, you know, the, the committee, Mr. Blatt has been there for a long time, maybe from the beginning, and chaired it for many years. They've brought in serious money, whether it's the, the streetlight conversions, or all the energy issues with the heat pumps being the most recent, but the police vehicles and any other vehicles, and the library lighting, et cetera, et cetera. Serious money into this town, and I want to commend them for their, for their job they do and the effort they put in to do that, to bring in state money to these projects. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
How long have we had the Green Communities designation?
We had the committee from the time when the state made inception of, of the committee, of the Green Communities. We've had that, the committee since then. However, it took Lunenburg probably, I'd say, five to six years to finally decide to become a Green Communities.
Okay.
I commend us that we got on that early.
Right.
However, you know, because there's towns, in fact, it's funny, but just Peabody was one town that, just, just, it was either Peabody or Saguas, and it just became one last year of, after all these years. It's like, guys, you're missing out. But we.
I think it's seven years, or six or seven years we've been a Green Community.
Oh, no, we've been longer than that. It's, it's, well, 2013, we've been a Green Community since.
Really?
Yeah.
12 years? Wow. Okay.
Yeah, we, we struggled, like I say, a lot. Some of the projects, we've, we've, like I said, we've struggled.
I just didn't think it was that long. I'm very bad with time.
And same here. No, I, it's making me realize how long I've been the chair then, so I'm, it's almost scary. But that's okay.
Well, it really is a great program. I mean, these are pretty sizable grants that we get.
It is very sizable with grants, and especially right now, with everything that we can do in this town and need to do, it's, you know, I think it's time, and I think we've all learned that, you know. we've all learned that, you know, doing the, putting the Band-Aids on doesn't really work, and if we can get the state to help us, why not?
Of course, yeah.
I could say, you know, the commendation I could give to the town and to your committee for joining it, even though it took several years for us to be a Green Communities, takes a little bit off the sting that we never joined the community preservation. So, you know, this is, this is one of the glowing good examples that counters, at least somewhat, a really poor example.
And I must say, I don't know how the folks in town, but, you know, the impact, I think, to the, the impact that it had to folks in town, having to do the stretch code, make their house more efficient, I think has been utterly minimal compared to the rewards that this town has seen from that. I think we're up to now, close to $900,000 that we've received, or actually over that, that we've received from the state in grant funding. So we haven't always been able to use all that money, but it's, however, it's available.
One last question. Have we, talking about the streetlights, I mentioned it, have we done a post-update, you know, a post-conversion audit?
We'd love to show, I will put something together for you guys. I guess, let me have something. But it is incredible. If you look at what our streetlight costs are, if you knew what they were before, we were roughly, I'm trying to say, over $10,000 a month or something like that.
Yes, to pay those bills.
Wow.
Yes. And we are now in that realm of like $1,500 a month. So the savings has been amazing. We've paid, we've already, pretty much paid for all the grief, I mean, all the, what it cost us to get through Unitil quite a bit. It's just, we just kick ourselves, and Mr. Passios will yell at me, but we kick ourselves that we couldn't get it done three years sooner, when we first started trying to argue with, I mean, discuss this with Unitil.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mr. Blatt, for all the work that you do to help us.
They've always a pleasure.
Yes, same here, same here. All right.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
My pleasure. Enjoy, guys.
All right.
They throw you out.
All right. We did a town manager report. Now down to new business. Review annual town meeting consent calendar. So we had our pre-town meeting meeting last week. The town moderator did ask that we remove a couple of articles from the consent calendar. So there was Article Two, Borrow and Anticipation of Revenue. Article Three, Expend Funds in Anticipation of Reimbursement of State Highway Aid. And Nineteen and Twenty, the Compensated Absences Reserve Fund. And his reasoning for that is while they may be non-controversial, they're new to the town. So he thought that it would be good to have them actually considered outside the consent calendar. And he did also add one, Payment of Prior Year's Bills. So he agreed with me on that one. So I don't know if you guys have any issues with these removals and that one addition, or?
The only comment I will make is that the prior town one just changes the whole voting, you know, to-
It does. Yeah, and we discussed that a little bit. I mean, anything you want to say on that?
I just, I, so I actually have in here, I've sent these off to Adam today, the question to him. If the motion under the prior town, prior fiscal year bill is to pass over it and not appropriate, is it then only a simple majority? Because right now, we don't have any prior fiscal year bills. So-
But we could in the next couple of weeks.
We could. In that, in that case, we could pull it, pull it out. Or, he said, but council's kind of comment was, it does raise, it would raise everything to the four fifths. And he said, but typically, the consent calendar is either going to be, it's going to be an up or down vote either way. So it's-
I only make the comment, I don't think it's going to be an issue. I always just worry about creating a high, like, the highest threshold there is of any vote, so.
I had one question, I think. Article twenty-seven?
Which one is that?
The peg access and cable.
Yep.
I wonder if there will be discussion about that. There has been?
Yeah, we, yeah, we talked about that, too.
That makes me a little nervous, leaving it on the consent calendar.
Well, you can, you can-
Okay.
Yeah.
Although, again, just what it costs to run it, it's not like-
I know, but.
Yeah. So if there is something that's controversial, they'll pull that out and then vote the rest of the consent calendar.
Right. We can go through them if you want.
I know.
Any need?
Nope.
No? Renee, any more?
No, that was the only one that caught my eye.
Okay.
Oh, wait, no, I take it back. What is thirty-two?
Thirty-two. Which one's that?
It's the assessors.
Oh, okay.
Thirty-two and thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
I just think that's going to need some explanation. So why even put it there? I think it's gonna-
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, you're not wrong there.
I think my opinion is if we can pull them off, we're not, leave them and with the chance of us-
Were they planning on making any sort of presentation?
I guess, I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah. As soon as I started saying it, I'm like, hmm.
So the Board of Assessors, it will be prepared, if it's pulled off, to answer questions or discuss it about what their intent here is. I think, yeah, I think Brian knows, you know, what he's trying to do and-
Right.
Those are the two I think might get pulled. Whether you want to put them on there and see if they get pulled or pull them now, I don't know if it matters. I want to get through town meeting.
So there's two, right. So there's two reasons, I think the town moderator was correct on one of the reasons why you don't put something on the consent calendar if it's new. The second thing is, even if it's not controversial, but somebody reads that and like, I have no idea what that is.
They're gonna be like, what?
Yeah. It's confusing. Yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't know that it's confusing. It's confusing, if left alone, it's not, I will say it this way. I don't think it's confusing, but it's also not self-explanatory.
Right.
You have to go to the booklet and read the summary.
Right. So, I mean, again, if, we give people the chance to pull it out. If we were to take a straw poll vote, I would say, take them out now and have them at least explain it and take the 10 minutes to explain it.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as we, of course, it always depends on who does the explaining, but that's another story.
I don't really feel strongly either way.
I don't either.
Yeah, no.
Okay, there you go.
Renee, how about you? Do you want to pull it out?
I don't know if it matters. Does it make-
Let's leave it.
Probably not. If someone, if someone has questions, they could stand up on the floor and just say, hey, like, I have questions about-
They don't have to stand up. They just say, hold. That's all they have to do. One word.
Yeah.
From their seat. They don't even have to get to the microphone.
Mm-hmm.
Can I say we leave it as is?
Okay. We'll leave it. We'll see what happens. All right. Any other questions on the consent calendar? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Old business. We can skip all of this and just focus on town meeting stuff tonight. So moving down to budget, capital plan, and town meeting warrant articles. I think I have two more things I want to cover. If there's anything else that we can cover, we can do that as well. But the first thing, so for the motion sheets, there's something new in there this year that we're maybe considering. I would like to ask the board about it. But it came up in the meeting of having non-select board members make motions when appropriate. For example, like, the Marshall Park warrant article could potentially be made by the Chair of the Parks Commission. I thought it warranted a conversation from the board. Do we want to allow that? Or do we want to just do what we always have done, just have it done by select board members, quick and efficient down the line?
Well, you have to be careful when you say, do what we always have done, because what we're doing in the last few years is not what we've always done.
Okay.
Because if there were elected bodies, like, usually the planning board introduces planning board articles. Sewer Commission would introduce sewer articles that are not just, you know, just budget, like enterprise fund. So in this case, the Marshall Park should be introduced by the Parks Commission. It's an elected body, the other one's presenting it, and so I would agree that they should present it and make the motion. And I think that the municipal building, they're not an elected body, so I could see why one of the elected members, in this case, the Chair is from the select board, so makes sense of them do it. But anytime we can, I think we should. And citizen petitions should be read by the citizen.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, that's one thing that we, if we're going to go down that path, we might as well add those, too, as well. Okay. So I'm trying to, I don't have them all off the top of my head, but, you know, the Chair of the Planning Board was making those.
I think I can, yeah. So the article that transfers, I think it's eleven, transfers-
For the school, the free cash?
The free cash to the school. Would we want the school committee Chair to make that motion, since he's going to have to be answering any questions?
I would think so.
The Marshall Park project, and then the two planning board articles, I think are the ones that I had in here as options.
And the citizen petitions, again, I would re-invoke the fact that whoever presented the citizen petition, somebody who signed it should be presenting it. And if nobody's there, it's kind of like if you fight a traffic ticket in court, if the cop's not there, then it doesn't get moved.
Right.
Like, it's a citizen petition, so the citizen should be there to move it.
Right.
I agree. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with it. All right. So then we'll let that happen, and then we'll also add the citizens' petitions being moved by whoever submitted them. All right. So that was all I had for the motions. Anything else that we want to cover with the motion sheet while we're already talking about it? Chen, is there anything you wanted to go through?
No, I think Town Council is out of town this week, so he said he was going to try to look at these while out of town, but I think they're in okay shape. So I'm assuming that we'll go back next week, if not this week.
All right, great. Any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up is whether or not we want to schedule a meeting before town meeting to vote on the articles that we deferred at like 8:30. We didn't do it last year.
We haven't done it in two years.
Yeah, two years ago.
Yeah. We used to do it all the time as a standing meeting, just in case, so.
Do we want to schedule it just in case, and then if we don't want to have it, we set scheduled?
That makes sense to me.
Okay. We'll go ahead and do that.
I think a lot of our, I feel like a lot of the deferrals, I wanted to hear presentations on the floor, but I can't remember all of them off the top of my head. But I have no problem meeting ahead of time.
I wrote down the ones that we deferred, just in case it came up. There's four of them.
Some we needed numbers, right?
Yeah. So Payment of Prior Year's Bill, FY 2025, Budget Adjustments and Closeouts, and then there's the capital program. I think those are all our deferrals.
Those are?
I think so. I went through it. Maybe I missed some, but.
I think you're correct, Mr. Chair.
There has been no calling of the capital planning committee to review anything.
I was going to ask that.
No. I haven't seen anything.
Okay. Well, we can go ahead and schedule it. If we don't need it, then we can show up a little bit later. All right. Anything else we want to cover for town meeting? That was all I had for tonight.
Sorry, that'll be there, right?
Yes.
It'll be here first.
No, no.
Any budget change, since we're on that whole?
Oh, sure, yes.
Any budget changes at all to report?
There's a minor change with the sewer enterprise budget. As it's printed in the warrant, in the actual summary, is the older version, but I was able to make the change to the hand, to the individual sewer article sheet that's in the book. So that's accurate. That's, it's a very minor change, just having to do with indirect costs. Other than that, no.
Good.
Great.
Great. Anything else? All right, let's move on. Minutes. I don't believe we have any. I didn't see any. Nope, no minutes. Warrants? Nope. Action items.
Did you guys get the action item tracker?
No, I was, I was thinking about it before this meeting. I didn't do it, but I will. I promise I will.
Don't worry. We're so busy this week, I didn't, wouldn't have looked at it anyway.
Can you put moving the action item over to the new thing as part of the action items?
Yeah, then I'll close it out after I do.
It's a recursive problem.
I know. I can handle that.
I wanted to check the action item tracker to see, because I think this is on there, only because, how many meetings we have left before the election? Not many.
Two at this point.
The tax investigation report, I think, been on there?
I know. Yes. May 6th.
There was, there was a whole bunch of questions that I thought-
Yeah. Well, the ten questions that went along with-
Right.
The investigation report.
Okay.
There were, there were questions that were submitted.
Yep.
Okay. I'm not trying.
Did we get them electronically? I think we did. Yeah, I think we got them by email.
They were presented, they were presented in person, and then they were followed up by an email, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other action items? Committee reports.
School committee met last week, and they talked about the use of the $500,000 of free cash, should they get it at town meeting, which is going to, majority of it going towards replenishment of staff. Turkey Hill EDA study, the draft report, was presented, and they talked about the repairs, mostly they prioritized, I haven't seen the report, and it was just like, there wasn't a presentation, they were just scrolling through the report live. I think it's like 128 pages. They prioritize the building envelope, the roof, and all the windows, and many doors, and everything taken together to basically carry Turkey Hill forward, you know, 20, 30 years, was in the order of $16 million. I don't know if that includes any contingencies, escalations, yada, 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 but that was a number that was thrown out. And the other item was the superintendent search. So they have four candidates they will be interviewing beginning next week, and I think they're supposed to wrap up the week of, like, May 5th and 6th. So, and then I think maybe potentially decide, you know, vote on a superintendent that same week, so May 7th, 8th, or 9th. And Stormwater Task Force meets Thursday this week. That's it.
Tom, do you have any?
I do not.
Okay.
Sorry.
I don't either. Master Plan is meeting tomorrow, and Economic Development Committee is meeting on May 1st, and I am missing still an Economic Development Committee report, so I will have both of those at our next meeting.
All right. And I don't have a committee report tonight. Upcoming meetings, May 3rd, 9:00 AM, annual town meeting at the Middle High School Auditorium, and then we'll be meeting May 6th. Public comment. Any public comments from the town manager?
No.
Any public comments from the public? Not seeing any, not seeing anyone on Zoom. Any public comment from the board?
I have one public comment, that town meetings are always important. It's the most, our open town meeting is the purest form of democracy you will find in America. This year, probably, with all the stuff and uncertainty going on in the economy and everything, I would encourage people more than ever to come to town meeting and vote on very substantial budgets and projects. So this town meeting will have a $49 million-plus omnibus budget. It will have a 22-plus million-dollar municipal building project, and a 13-plus million-dollar park plan for Marshall Park. Now, however you feel about these, pro or con, this is the time to come and voice your opinion and participate, because projects of this size, believe me, will need, we'd like to feel that whatever the vote is, it's representative of the whole town, and not 120 people who decided to come one Saturday in May. So I encourage people to attend and be involved and participate in the direction of the town. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Alonso. Any other public comments? All right. With that, is there a motion?
Can I do a public comment?
You absolutely can. Come on up.
Dave Blatt for 11 Goodrich Street. I know it's part of the town charter or things like that, but the town meetings on Saturday are extremely, extremely long. It's, for some folks, it's a religious day for them, and they cannot come. For others, they have actually have children that might be in an event, and how do you tell your eight-year-old, nine-year-old that I can't come to your event because I have to sit and do town meeting? And we wonder why we don't have a quorum, or we have, we struggle to get 150, the same 150 people. I understand that Tuesday nights can get very, very long. However, I would like, love to see that town meetings are not held, especially this time of year, are not held on Saturdays.
Thank you, Mr. Blatt.
You're welcome.